So the City of Buckeye Council workshop on October seventh, two thousand and twenty five. We have a workable piece.
Councilmember Yonker, Jason Hassett, councilmember Garrett.
Here.
Councilmember Gooden.
Present.
Councilmember Hines there.
Here.
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jesus.
Here.
President, thank you very much. I have the number two as workshop items. To a presentation and discussion of the transit master plan update. We have about forty-five minutes for this. Our staff liaison is Mr. John Little. Do you think he can get it done in forty-five minutes?
I'm gonna try my best, man.
Okay, all right, maybe fifty?
We're gonna set our timers down.
Yeah, all right, set the timer.
Go.
There you go. All right. What'd you say?
Nothing.
So that's important.
What's the over-under on this?
Over-under on this.
Just so you know, this part.
I've got over. Your burdens. They're always beating me up. It's okay. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. John Wood, acting deputy director for only four more days. The transportation. I do have two lifelines. I have this Miranda back here to help me if I have any questions. And our consultant, Tracy's over there at the corner. She's our consultant for this project. So if I have to phone a friend, they're right behind me. In case any questions come up. So this is a presentation on the transit master plan. It's an update of one we're basically updating, the previous one. So why are we doing this? It was a council strategic action item for us to look at. Our goal is to have this finished by the end of this calendar year. We were identify the types of transit services that best serve Buckeye. We're all aware there's a lot of transit services that are out there right now. There's the fixed route. There's the microtransit. There's the local circulator. We were asked to try to figure out what could come in right now. Well, we needed to research all these options. Find out what we need, what can serve it, how to best do it. And then part of the goal was to implement short and long-term strategy based on some calculated milestones. So what has been done so far? We found out what we have. We have a circulator that starts at the parking ride and goes into downtown Phoenix. That's the orange line you see up there. Hope I got this right. Yes. And then we have the purple line, which is the line that comes from Ajo Hila Ben, meanders through Buckeye, and then works its way out to Avondale and over there. We also found out we have a lot of van pools in Buckeye. I didn't notice that we did this. Lot of them go. I knew we had some that went out to Paula Verdi. Didn't realize that we have several that go down to the water patrol, help out down there, goes to the Hila generating station, and some of them going to downtown Phoenix area. It's quite surprising to find out. So we have some stuff. So that was our starting point. What was the summary of findings? We were all familiar how Buckeye is spread out. We're not like downtown Phoenix. So because of that spread out mentality or situation we have, we're not like New York. We don't have a whole lot of downtown high-rises that are supported by subways and a lot of buses. We don't have the mixed urban use as of yet. We're getting there. We kind of have some neighborhood, but not quite a bit yet. We're more down in this box in the bottom that is supported by regular buses and on-demand or what they call microtransit. So this is kind of the world we live in right now on Buckeye to how we're spread out. So that was kind of our starting point of what to go with. We found out that, let me go back up here, service like microtransit, that's the on-demand, and the best way to describe microtransit for you all is like Uber Transit. You call an Uber, it comes to pick you up, takes you wherever you want. Microtransit is the same concept. You call a van, it comes to picks you up, takes you to basically where you want to go as long as you stay within what they call a geo-fenced area. So for example, you could not call Uber Transit to pick you up here and take you to downtown Phoenix. They could take you to other designated areas of Buckeye that we're allowed to go to. And then we also found out that, you know, the connections to Buckeye, Sundance, Barado, Tartesso Festival, getting more and more needs to be out there. And then how do we take care of that as the employment and services continue to grow? So we have all this stuff, and we have more things coming in that's gonna basically change the dynamics of what we gotta provide. Some additional findings. We did a lot of surveys. We actually got six hundred and forty-four responses over two months. What we found out is lower-income people, ninety-two percent of them have asked they need some kind of service. Eight percent really didn't say they needed anything, which, okay, that's fine. Of higher income, and I can't tell you what the magic line is between low income and high income. It's just a federal designation. Eighty percent said they would use it if there was something available. Twenty percent were kind of indifferent. What we did find out from them is they said they would like something, but they don't really know what they want. There's some kind of transit would be nice. They didn't really have a preference of what specific transit it needs to be. Whether it's a fixed route system, which you're familiar with the downtown Phoenix, circulator, which would be like the Ollie Trolley in Scottsdale, or the Gold Bus in Glendale, or the Uber Transit, or microtransit. I call it Uber, same concept. So what we came up with was some short-term and long-term transit strategies. And the primary short-term one is was funded by council. It is in the process of right now, community services, Miranda's group is hiring a transit coordinator to help with their system. And then the spring, or I'm sorry, early in January, they're gonna hire some more people, and I get to that in a second. But what this is, we found out in talking to Miranda and mainly Phil, they spend a lot of time shuttling people to the community center, but also senior citizens to medical appointments. And that spends, that takes up a lot of their resources, both the vehicles and staff. So we came up with, well, what's the immediate fix to take care of that right now? And so that's what we came up with is they're gonna create two groups or two departments or sub-departments. One still takes care of the senior citizens, getting them to and from the senior center. And or else, or whatever else the senior center normally does, takes them to the library, things like that. The second group or department, sub-department, would provide the rides to services that people need. Whether it's to medical, take someone to work, pick them up from work, take them to shopping, things like that. Long-term, we're gonna look at talking to Valley Metro, see what we can get out of here. The concern that we have with the Valley Metro concept is Valley Metro, through Prop forty-seven, forty-eight nine, just came out and decided to reevaluate incurred transit routes, and routes that are underperforming low ridership are flat-out being canceled. So existing routes that have low ridership being canceled, it's gonna be hard for us to convince them, can you give us a brand-new route that might start with low ridership? So we have to keep that in the back of our head a little bit going forward. So these are the short and long-term strategies we came up with. I'll talk a little bit more about the short-term and community services expansion. This is the target audience we're looking at taking care of is older residents, people with disabilities, veterans, and low-income individuals. And these maps kind of show you, almost hit the wrong button, where the low-income households are. So we do it here. The dark blue is more low-income. The more darker blue it is, the more area has lower income. A lot of this is central of Buckeye-oriented. Not sure why there's a big band up here in way north Buckeye. I don't know if there's any residents up there.
You got a large group of a hundred and fifty veterans out there. That's probably the reason for that.
Okay, well, that answers the question. Thank you. So part of this expansion, again, is like I mentioned, is one full-time employee. That's the transit coordinator. They're in the process of trying to hire that person right now. In January-ish, they're gonna try, they're gonna, the goal is hire two and a half full-time employees. Not sure how we get a half a person. But that's our goal, to get two and a half full-time employees for drivers. Inventory. What's been happening, what's gonna happen is one of the existing twelve-passenger vans is gonna transition from the one side of the trans, or DS, or community services, services of providing rides to the senior citizens over to this group. And then they're in the process of buying two brand-new vans. And this is the picture of what the vans look like. Wheelchair accessible, cares about three or four people, and can shuttle people to and from their appointments, shopping, work, as needed. What are the opportunities from this program? One, it expands the service that we currently provide to get people around. Key, most important probably, depends who you talk to, is a pilot program. It allows us to start something. We can start monitoring what this is and find out, is it working? What needs to be tweaked to make it work better? What maybe needs to be scaled back because that part's not working? But at least it gives us a test, or pilot program as they call it. And the key thing about the pilot program is MAG does have some potential funding, but in order to chase most funding or even federal funding, you need to have a year's worth of data to show what you have to go ask for anything. Well, right now, we don't have really anything. So this at least gets us some data for a year's worth to start evaluating. Again, it does not, the pilot is not convinced to a long term. We can tweak it and modify it as needed. Let staff figure out what is working and what's not working. And then key is here also provides a guide on what the future phases could possibly be. Challenges. One of the key challenges is funding. Currently, the expansion is funded using, twenty-six uses ALF funds. However, going forward, it will need to be funded somehow.
What is the ALF?
Arizona Lottery funds. So we get a certain amount every year. I don't know the exact amount. But the exact amount is lower than the yearly need for the project. So funding will need to come from somewhere. And one of the ways to look at this, and this is not a good number people like to hear, there is only one transit system in the entire world that makes money, and it's in Hong Kong. Can't tell you why. Every other one is not a moneymaker. And basically, transit is a service, kind of like a library or park. We don't make any money on those. It's what we provide to our residents, so they just, as part of the quality of life, providing things to them. Another challenge is the advanced reservation system we do only allows them to book twenty-four, forty-eight hours. Can't book reservations a week or two in advance. So for example, let's say Mr. Smith went to his, his chemotherapy appointment today. And they said, okay, your next appointment is October thirty-first. He can't book his ride for October thirty-first using our system because we're only allowed to do one to two days in advance. So that's, that's just a challenge we're gonna have to be working through and see how we can make that a little better. And then the last one is Tartesso and Festival, a little farther out there. Serving them is not impossible. It's just gonna be challenging. We'll have to work through and find out the best way to do that. Next steps, starting tomorrow. We've been doing community engagement for quite a while. We'll continue going on through the rest of October and November. The transit master plan will be posted tomorrow morning for the public to review and provide comments on. We basically have a thirty-day cover view period. And then based on the comments we receive from you all in this meeting, you all after this meeting, and any residents, we will modify, adapt, clean up the transit master plan, and bring it back to you for approval. The goal is in December. It gives us about two or three weeks when the comment period ends to clean everything up. Next steps for long-term is identify successes and challenges from this pilot program. Evaluate the type of version of microtransit to implement. For example, there is WeRide that Avondale and Goodyear used. Surprise did use it. They no longer do it. Their council decided not to fund it anymore. Chandler used a different version called Via. Same concept. There's, what Tolason is doing is slightly different. They're using flat-out Uber for the transit. They found out it was easier to do that, and through the system that Uber provides, it pretty much covers all of Goodyear, I'm sorry, all of Tolason, and select locations outside of Tolason. So that may be an option we look at doing. Again, Tolason was able to implement that one really quick. And then the funding. We'll definitely need to find some funding, whether it's federal, long-term, or City of Buckeye funding. And then I'll answer the questions. Except for Mr. Goodman.
Okay. John, you did really well.
Less than fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Over-under, I think over. All of us must know that.
Questions from, from council?
Yeah, can you go back to the challenge slide? So advanced reservation system, is that an US problem or a technology problem?
It's a, right now, it's a technology problem. It's with the software we're purchasing now. We will work with them to see how it can be modified and tweaked, to provide better flexibility.
So do you have this software now that allows forty-eight hours in advance?
That is my understanding. Yes, sir.
So are we buying something that's gonna allow a bigger window to make a reservation?
That's part of what the pilot program is gonna let us figure out. Is this software gonna do what we want it to do? Can it be adopted, I'm sorry, adapted to do what we'd like it to do? Or do we need to be to find a totally different software program?
You're still not answering my question.
You guys in the corner, end here. Over here.
Oh, okay. I'm gonna call a lifeline.
So we're in the, we're in the process of evaluating and implementing a software. We will require a forty-eight hour advanced, advanced booking right now. So into, the idea is that that's how we will monitor and schedule our drivers when we roll the program out. Based on the reservations that we receive, will help us, and I guess the demand will help us determine if we can begin releasing same-day reservations at that time. So when we roll out the program, the program is that you would have to book forty-eight hours, at least forty-eight hours in advance, until we start figuring out what the demand is. Part of our issue is that our program has been full. It's always been full. Because we've not had a lot of resource. We've had a half-time driver that's been able to devote their time to this. And so the little bit of time that we have had has always been full. So when we roll this out, we will require the forty-eight hour advanced booking. And then once we have a little bit of time figuring out are all the time slots booked, are only fifty percent of the time slots booked, so forth, then we can start releasing some of those times. So at least a forty-eight hour.
Is forty-eight hours a maximum time?
I had it backwards. Forty's the minimum.
Correct. It's a minimum.
So, so somebody could book, you know, two weeks out if they, their night appointment two weeks out.
The earliest they could book right now would be Thursday afternoon or Friday morning. They couldn't book tomorrow. I had it backwards. My bad.
And we haven't hired our transit coordinator yet. So once they, they get on board, they will have all of these things very clearly outlined for folks on the how do you do it. The software right now is being implemented, or just now being purchased and then will be implemented. So all that will be, I think this, exactly how it's gonna work is a little bit premature for this.
I may have been the only one that was confused by that bullet, but for me, you may wanna put a minimum.
Understood.
Like, say this is the minimum amount of time?
Yes.
This is, again, the way I read it is like, I can't book a week from now. I can only book two days from now.
Correct. Not, understood as to why you were confused on that. It's a, we will be required at forty-eight hour minimum.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? I've got a couple. I think, I know it's difficult to get to these areas, but we're, and I think every single area is asking, not everyone in every single area, but there are people in different areas asking for some sort of transit opportunity. Whether that's in downtown here to get to doctor's office, people that just don't drive, or it's in Tartesso, or it's in Festival. I think, I think we need to figure out a way to provide some service to, to those areas. Even in this trial period, this one-year trial period that we're working on. So I think I'm understanding that it's, it's, we're only gonna be working in this downtown area. Is that correct? Are we across the entire? Okay, good. I misunderstood.
Yeah, so.
You gotta make simpler bullet points, because already two of us are not good.
So, Mayor, councilmembers, so we've had that exact discussion internally. Again, because we, we don't, we don't know what to expect need-wise, we are going to open it up to everybody in the city to start with. And then we can really start figuring out where the needs are pulling from. We do know that our human services and social services are very, the, the, those services are very evenly dispersed throughout the city. And so I have no reason to believe that the need for transit services won't be, we won't see the exact same trends that we've got most equal need across all of the districts and neighborhoods. And so, but the only way to do it, as John said, is to kind of to start doing it and seeing where the need is. And I think that we recognize that we're going to this first year have some, some empty windshield wales getting out and to and from. The other challenge that we face is that not all of the specialized services for medical appointments and so forth are served here in Buckeye. So for example, dialysis has not always been able to be done here in Buckeye. You've had to go outside of Buckeye. So as more of those services and our friends in economic development are doing a great job bringing those services in and making them available here, you know, we can, can service our residents who live in Buckeye with Buckeye services. But sometimes we're gonna have to take them to here to surprise because that's what's gonna be, it's gonna make the most sense. So when we open this up, our intent is to open it citywide, and then really start looking at the data and figuring out what's the data telling us, and how can we start getting a little bit more strategic about, you know, it's a certain day of the week that we're noticing it coming out of Festival or Tartesso more than down here in downtown Buckeye. And then we can start getting a little bit more strategic with it. I think that, I think that Doug said earlier, you know, if you ask anybody, hey, would you take transit? Lots of people are gonna say yes. But then actually converting that person to a, making the phone call for the transit ride might be a little bit different than what some of our survey results say. So the software is what's gonna help us really track those. It will also help us track the riders that we're not able to accommodate so we can really start figuring out where the peak demands are.
Oh, is this gonna be like a Monday through Friday, seven to seven, or whatever?
Yes, to start, excuse me, to start with, it'll be Monday through Friday, and the hours, I just looked at them and I couldn't tell you.
That's okay.
Extend longer than eight to five is, is the plan. I think he's got six thirty to five or six.
Yep.
I want a ride for my child who's at school. I'm gonna provide that. And if it's a special needs child, what are we gonna do?
Yeah. It's a great question. So right now, we've kind of set some priorities of who we think, of how we think that, what we've heard on feedback of how we should prioritize who's getting the rides first. Again, I don't know, do our rides fill with these four categories of folks? So right now, we're looking at our, our active adults that maybe need some help getting to and from medical services and so forth, folks with disabilities, veterans, and low-income individuals. And some of that low-income individual servicing might happen through our human services group, right? So if I've got somebody that comes in and needs help with, they've been laid off this, this month, and they need help paying their bills and so forth. They've got a new job, they need help getting back and forth from their job. Perhaps we get them a couple of rides, a couple weeks' worth of rides back and forth to their job till they get their first paycheck. So, so this is the, the first set of group, group of folks that we plan to serve. But again, if our, if our two folks, three folks aren't full off of this group of individuals, then I think that we can start opening up our parameters and taking a look at, do we wanna look at a team program like what Goodyear has? They can get kids back and forth from Perkins when it opens up, or back and forth to Walmart or whatever that is. So this is where we plan to start. But I think today is about your feedback, and we're open to hearing that as well.
But the cost per ride? Did I miss that in there?
We do not have that as yet. The city is buying the buses, and it's just the cost of the employee, and then whatever, the vehicles, gas, tire, all that. This is significantly different than Goodyear and Avondale, where those agencies are paying a third party to provide the bus and the driver. And so you're basically, you're paying that every day for however many hours that is. And then based on your number of rides, it brings that cost per ride down. We haven't had that dialed in yet. We've already, we're buying the buses, or the vans.
I, I think that it's gonna be hard for us, because that's, depending on what neighborhood we're picking up from most, is dramatically gonna change how, how many I think that we're able to service, right? So if we're picking up folks from Sundance and taking them to the medical services also in Sundance area, we're able to do more of those than going and picking them up from Festival than just time-wise, right? So again, I think that after the first year, we'll be able to come back and release some really good data about what we've, what we've done and how much that costs. And I, I think how we can maybe do it more efficiently the next time around.
I think that's the key. In some, some areas, you're trying to fit either an existing service into like a, you know, squirt bag into a round hole. It doesn't always work. And, and I was a part of Valley Metro when they went to the taxi or the, it was basically a dollar ride type setup. And fantastic idea because you have taxis that are sitting around maybe not doing something. This is a great way for them to make money and sort of that public-private partnership. But it became so successful that, if you continue with it, you're gonna end up bankrupting cities. Not quite that. But it was just incredibly expensive because everybody wanted to, to get a three-dollar ride to wherever. And so funding is always an issue with transportation. And I appreciate what you had said in the beginning of this is transit and these transportation opportunities never pay for themselves. You know, you said only Hong Kong. Hong Kong was.
That's, that's what I'm aware of. Yes, sir.
And that's probably bad intel coming out of there. So if you have. So if you have, some of you travel around, you see like subways in New York, or, or the metro in DC. There are robust, really, really low-travel transit systems that still don't make money. It is truly a public utility. It's not like an enterprise underwater company where we're breaking even on it. And so that's always in the conversation, trying to figure out how we, how we balance the need for our residents with the, with the cost of, with the cost of providing service. So more to come on that. I think Valley Metro is typically a, what are they saying, 20, 20 to maybe 30% is, like 25%. Somewhere in that range is, is the return that they get on. That's the, that's what comes from fares. Something we lack out here right now, but eventually we'll have, and maybe we can talk a little bit, not spend too much time on it, but long, long-term for transit in the city of Buckeye. We don't have transit-oriented development, TOD, here currently in the city. But as some of these activity centers really get developed out, you have a tremendous opportunity for transit-oriented development within that activity center. And then maybe between those activity centers are these spoke and wheel, or hub and spoke concepts pushing out. So you've got the robust transit that maybe is in that landing activity center that stretches out into other areas and brings folks in there. And there's, there's maybe an opportunity as we grow out. I think even when I was on Valley Metro, this is 10 years ago or so, that there was a lot of conversation about, you know, what does transit look like in Buckeye in the future? I really do not think that we will ever have a light rail line out here. That it's going to be some other technology that's moving people around. But we can establish these corridors, whether it's a width issue, or utilities in the right place issue, or maybe it's just lanes that are designated eventually for some type of transit. What does that long, long-term look like for us? I know we're really not, we're sort of getting a little bit off-topic, because we're just talking about these things. But what, what does that look like in the future when we're a little bit closer to building out with half a million people living in the city?
Mayor, Councilmember? The long, long-term there, the state is looking at a people mover, more of a mass train, but a train that goes from Buckeye to Tucson. That's being studied right now, being done by the state to look at. Basically, the station would be in downtown Buckeye, travels a UPRR into downtown Phoenix, goes throughout the east part of the valley, then initially down to Tucson. That's being evaluated. What is the reality of that? I honestly couldn't tell you. When is it going to happen? How much is it going to cost? Cost obviously will be a lot. Timing could be many, many years down the road. As far as using the TOD concept, transit-oriented development, yes. We're already looking at that. One of our strategic goals in the PMO office is to look at what is the transit associated with needs? With high commercial, high employment, or high residential areas? Most TOD-type developments are a little more vertical than normal. You're probably looking at five, six and above-story buildings, complexes? Is it mixed use with, you know, commercial on the bottom floor? Some office on the second, third residential, four through eight, or whatever? Maybe working with DSD and some planning zoning changes to allow some of that to happen that encourages that? Is it a combination of, it's probably a combination of Uber Transit, because that's the last mile? Because no matter what kind of fixed route system we put in, you still can't get that last half-mile, quarter-mile to someone's front door. One of the comments I used to always ask people was, you run a bus down Thomas at 27th Avenue, and you live at 31st Avenue and the half-mile street. You're asking someone to carry the groceries and their three little kids, a half-mile, it's 110 degrees. That's not very comfortable. So how do we get people what's called the last mile? And it's probably a combination of the Uber Transit, some kind of fixed circulator, and some kind of fixed route system that we have, and what most of the valley uses. Maybe if Tempe has the streetcar, if you're not familiar with the streetcar in Tempe, it actually has rubberized wheels and runs in a traveling. So when it's not there, it's in normal traveling. And then the streetcar may be behind you when you're stopped at a stoplight. But it's full of like 50 people, instead of just you. Maybe that's a concept we look at as some kind of streetcar system that runs through various portions of Buckeye. Terraballus may have their own circulator system up there, because they're big enough themselves. They may want one that stays in their area, that then connects to something on standby parkway that gets to other places. It's all part of our studies to figure out what, that may be subsequent studies, updates to the Transit Master Plan.
But that, that long-term though, is in our thought process as we're planning out the city. It's trying to figure out, and it's difficult to figure out, because we don't know what that technology is. I mean, 15 years from now, it could be the jets that's zipping back and forth.
Could be air packs.
But it's, it's trying to determine what that future is, and future-proof us, so that we have whatever that is, the corridors and the airspace, or the, those circulators and last mile type transit opportunities, long-term. So we're moving people around differently than we have in the past.
So to back up a little bit about how unique Tollis and Uber's system is, just so people get a comparison. If you ride the Tollis and Uber, you pay a set fee. The city pays the rest up to a predetermined dollar amount. If you want to go farther, and now the ride costs another $10, you as the driver are responsible for that $10. And you stayed in the certain area. The nice thing about using Uber, you, you book the ride through Uber, and based on where you say you want to go, they'll say, oh, you're outside our normal system, you're a normal Uber ride. So Bob Jones is responsible for 100%. Oh, based on where you're being picked up and where you want to go, you fall in the Tollis and Transit area. So you pay your $2, the city pays the rest. And so the Uber drivers can have any kind of fare. They're not, they're not doing only transit, or they're not doing only non-transit. They can do both all day long. And so it kind of gives, encourages the Uber drivers to be available. And so the pilot program we're proposing really gives us the ability to, to find out what we really, truly need. I mean, Miranda and her group have some really good ideas based on what they've been doing. But as she mentioned, there's a lot of people they've been having to turn down, because they're on capacity. What are, what are their other true needs? The pilot program allows us to do that. How can we adapt it on the fly? Or can we not adapt it on the fly? We don't 100% know all this stuff yet. And so it's really hard to say, hey, Mayor, I think we need a council, we need to buy a $150,000 circulator and put it out there. And then you guys come back, John, this circulator is empty. 20 rides out of the day, there's nobody in it. That was not the very wisest spending of money. And so this will give us an idea to know where we get picked up, where they're going. The nice thing about the program that we're utilizing also allows for multiple riders to be on the same trip. So Mr. Jones going to dialysis, and Mrs. Smith going to the same dialysis, or a half-mile apart. We can use one vehicle, they can both. So the program has the ability to do that for us.
So it's, it's really a data collection tool for us for the next year, so that we can dial that, I guess, the years one through, or the years two through five, and then figure out exactly what we need. And then just continue to morph that into an overall transit.
Do we need to change the hours? Do we need more buses? Do we need bigger buses? We'd expand the area, advertise it more. It gives us something to start with.
We've never publicly advertised our, the little bit of transit that we do today. It's, and it's always full. So this will allow us to be, to tell folks, hey, if you've got a need for the service, give us a call. But what we didn't want to do is put it out there and have a bunch of people call and us turn them away. So we've got more capacity to, to make it a little bit more, to advertise it all and start really collecting the data. And now we'll have a dedicated person to this is what they do. It's not kind of their, their part-time on-the-side gig, this is what they'll do. And we'll have the, the software to collect the data and be able to give some real, real numbers that we can stand behind here in about a year.
So right now, as far as I know, somebody calls the city fiddle to book a ride. This is all done either through a computer, or you can download the app on your phone. So when Mr. Smith finishes their doctor's appointment, and they get their next one, they can log in right then and there and book it before they even leave the doctor's office. They don't have to wait to get back home and log in off their home computer. So it's a really adaptable program.
Good. Any other questions here? I appreciate that. It's exciting to get our, I guess, our starter kid for transit in the city of Buckeye. It's going to be awesome. All right, you did good, John, you finished early. But I think that maybe we're not going to be able to start, or we will be able to start our CFT meeting.
I can talk more.
You got anything else to say?
I can talk about some other stuff, if you'd like to know.
No, no, we don't want to get you alone. It's something else. All right. So that is it for item two under workshop items. Item three, as determined with nothing else on the agenda, we are adjourned. We are adjourned.